We'll call the work.
It's all right.
Okay. Item number one. Item number two. Item three. Item four.
Mayor, Council, this is the policy that I told you that I would bring to you before any type of expenditures were made in relation to the money you set aside for 2025 projects and incentives. And so this policy does outline that it is a separate fund and it will be used only for major 2025 expenditures. You know, follow our normal purchasing policy, which means anything over 50,000 would require City Council approval.
Item five.
This is an interesting issue, not one that you normally see. It does happen within Lewisville, but it would normally go to ZBOA. But because it's Castle Hills and they technically don't have zoning, it has to come to the council as a variance to the development.
Uh, I'm sorry. Mayor, if I could ask a question?
Go ahead, sir.
On the variance, on the number one variance, it talked about six inches or something like that. In the backup material, it referenced fourteen feet or something. And it was kind of confusing is what it was.
It's not.
Are they asking a variance for nine inch, some inches? Are we talking about fourteen feet or whatever?
It's not fourteen feet.
Oh, I don't know the, I'm looking for it here. I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, it's not fourteen feet. You know, if you were to look at the house, you're not going to really even be able to tell just looking at it.
Yes.
That the setbacks are not being bad. It's not extensive. It just sits a little askew on the lot, but staff believes that it's not problematic. This is a house that's already been built. His first time owner of this property. And obviously, in order for him to close out at the bank, he's got to have some letter from us that says that he doesn't want this facility to exist. But it's a pretty major or pretty minor impact.
And so the answer to my question was inches or feet?
Yeah, but Nika.
Actually, there are two sections of importance. One is in the utility easement, about nine inches, and one is in the wall easement, which is about fourteen and a half inches.
Oh, it's fourteen.
No. So it's a little lower.
The lower one. Okay. Thank you.
So how does that work as far as the Water District having jurisdiction?
Well, there's no zoning in the development. And so under the agreement, they say they will comply, they will adopt our zoning regulations. So I don't know if I can really answer that question legally.
There's no mechanism by which the Water District can take care of this. So the way we've been handling things over the last however many years is to come to the council and ask for a variance to the agreement.
The agreement.
The agreement.
Which is kind of funny.
April 1st agreement.
We knew we had done, but I was wondering how, if the Water District had the authority to do kind of a...
I mean, they can adopt rules, but their rules never envisioned a ZBOA kind of structure. So, you know, the reason that the agreement is written the way it's written is so that when we do annex them, there's a structure that is similar to our structure. So it makes sense logically to come here because hopefully ultimately they'll be within our city. Thank you.
So when that does happen, some of the things that are allowed out there now that aren't allowed in our city, will they all change?
No, because they come here and y'all.
No, I'm saying the things that are allowed out there now.
That were agreed to.
That are not allowed in our city.
Right, but that were agreed to by the development agreement?
No, I'm thinking of things like, actually, things like things of ride driving golf carts on the streets.
Oh, once it becomes ours, once it, once we annex it, then we can control all of it.
So they no longer be a resort community, correct?
I want to make sure, because I thought we could.
They did that because they're a resort community.
Right, I understand.
And that's state law.
And that's state.
Right, but I didn't know if it was already there once we were grandfathered. I mean, I didn't know if it'd be grandfathered.
It might be a question at that point about state law.
It might be.
Or the PD's getting golf carts. Does Ford make any?
Not on the cutting.
They live for a price.
For a price. Okay, any other questions on five?
On that same subject, yes, it was variance A, the one I referenced before. It is approximately nine inches in depth, spans 10 feet for a total width of 6.73 square feet. Is that correct, Nika?
Yes.
Because that's what I was talking about when I said, well, are we given a variance on six feet or nine inches? That's what caused my question.
It's just the area because you know.
Okay. And building on the mayor's question, does the, who owns the wall that the Water District is giving some kind of okay on?
Water District, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Item six. Anything else, Council? Julie?
No, sir.
Liz?
No, sir.
It is seven o'clock. We have a quorum. We'll call the City Council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, excuse me, the invocation led by Mayor Pro Tim Gilmore and the pledge of the American and Texas flags, which I will lead.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one city, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much.
Tonight, we have a very special presentation by, for the city of Lewisville in a celebration of our 90th birthday. And so at this time, I'd ask Lewisville's official poet laureate, J. P. Paul, Jay Paul Holcomb, to come forward, if you will, sir. Apologize for messing that up. If you will, come forward and give us this special blessing for our 90th birthday.
Okay. Be happy to. Celebrating Lewisville's 90th anniversary. As folks return to the homes of their youth, they often say, it's not the same. And anyone who grew up in Lewisville could easily make that claim. If you left home in 1970, you left a sleepy town of 9,000. And if you returned in 2014, you came back to a city of 100,000 busy residents. Indeed, it's not the same. And if you were Bas Deal Lewis, the man who founded and named the area after himself once he purchased Holford's Prairie in 1853, how would you regard 2015 Lewisville? You would most likely smile with pride when you learned the city incorporated in 1925. Forty-four years after railroad tracks gave Lewisville a big town R, although its population reached just 500 in 1888. In 1930, five years after incorporation, Lewisville's numbers increased to 853 and began to show the promise of becoming a city. The next year, Lewisville celebrated the U.S. Route 77 paving with a coming out of the mud ceremony, thus closing the Lewisville gap and allowing the road from Dallas to Denton to be completely paved. Now, Lewisville has IH35, an updated 77. The land's the thing, but now we have Lewisville Lake plus Lila, the Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Area, a green space where lessons are learned and taught about what this prairie was and is. Lila transforms Lewisville into an outside classroom where what the city was, is, and can be is taught and learned every day. And Old Town has not been forgotten. The new City Hall exudes dignity as municipal affairs are conducted within its walls and the MCL Grand Theater offers a distinguished setting where the arts flourish. But what's in Lewisville's future? That's the question city planners considered as they began laying out Lewisville 2025. Like proud parents of a growing child, these planners set about to understand the current status of their source of pride, how citizens wanted the city to develop, and what could be done to influence that development. The plan is complete. The city celebrates its 90th birthday with a completed plan for what Lewisville will be as it turns 100 in 10 years. And if Bas Deal came back tonight, he would most certainly be astounded at how things have changed. But I'm sure he would grin, then laugh, and help us all shout, "Happy 90th Birthday, Lewisville."
That was wonderful. That was truly a wonderful celebration for the city. And thank you so much, Mr. Holcomb, for your efforts, work that you put into that. That's going to go down and be chronicled in our history, and we appreciate that, sir.
Thank you very much.
Item one is a public hearing consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from agriculture open space to light industrial located on approximately 0.959 acre tract of land located on the north side of Bennett Lane, approximately 525 feet east of Yates Street, as requested by Derek Baker of Keller Williams Realty on behalf of Pensco Trust Company, FBO Diane Brandonberger, and Patricia Morgan, the property owners. Pensco Trust Company currently owns the property and is in the process of trying to sell it. This is a family long, fairly long and narrow lot and is vacant of many buildings. The majority of property is in an area, is in this area is zoned light industrial, although several parcels still retain their agriculture open space designations. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of a zone change request by a vote of 5-0 at their meeting January 6, 2015. Recognition of staff as the council approved the proposed ordinance as set in the caption above. Did not have any speaker cards to fill out, I mean, to speak on this item. Councilman Ferguson?
If no one is wanting to speak, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ferguson, close the public hearing. Second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Having a motion by Councilman Ferguson, approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning an approximately 0.959 acre tract of land located at the north side of Bennett Lane, approximately 525 feet east of Yates Street from agricultural open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing consideration of ordinance for a zone change request from single-family residential to Old Town Mixed Use 1, located at 254 West Walter Streets on 0.30 acres, further identified as Lot 5, Block 1, O-T, Lewisville Edition, as requested by Lance Lindley, the property owner. The 0.30 acre property is located at the southeast corner of Harrod Street and West Walter Street and is occupied by a one-story residence built in 1942. The zone change request matches the Old Town Plan, Old Town Master Plan, recommended zoning for this area. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zone change request by 5-0 vote at their meeting in January 6, 2015. Recognition of staff as council approved as presented. Once again, I do not have anyone here to speak on this item. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Vaughn to close the public hearing. Second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance as stated in the caption?
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve as presented. Second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by rezoning approximately a 0.30 acre tract of land located at 254 West Walter Street from single-family residential district zoning to Old Town Mixed Use 1 district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand this zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is visitor citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have anyone fill out a card to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone asked to have an item pulled. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Durham to approve consent agenda. Second by Councilman, Councilman Tierney, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is consideration of a variance to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement to allow a single-family resident located at 661 The Lakes Boulevard in Castle Hills to encroach nine inches into the 10-foot front yard setback, nine inches into the six-foot utility easement, and up to 14 and a half inches into the 10-foot wall maintenance easement as requested by Matt Taylor representing American Legend Homes. On August 5, 2014, borrowed land surveying unknowingly staked the lot incorrectly at 661 The Lakes Boulevard. As a result, the house was built slightly askew on the lot and created three encroachments on the property. American Legend Homes, the home builder, is requesting the following variances. A, to follow the single-family residence to allow the single-family residents to encroach up to nine inches into the 10-foot front setback. B, to allow the single-family residents to encroach nine inches into the six-foot utility easement. And C, to allow the single-family residents to encroach up to 14 and a half inches into the 10-foot wall maintenance easement. This lot is a corner lot and the encroachments face the front and side street. Recognition of staffs that council approved the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second. Having a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve, a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, consideration of a resolution ordering a special election to be held. I apologize, I forgot to read it. We did have a card here by Mr. Matt Taylor on item five, but he was here just to answer any questions, and obviously there were no questions. Consideration, item six, consideration of a resolution ordering a special election to be held in conjunction with the May 9, 2015 Lewisville City Council election for the purpose of electing one member to the City Council to fill the unexpired term of Councilman Place Number Five, authorization of election calendar, and authorization for the mayor to sign the election order. On January 26, 2015, the City Council called an election for the mayor's position in Place Number Two. Councilman Rudy Durham submitted an application to run for the mayor position on January 28, 2015. Per state law, by submitting this application, Councilman Durham has automatically resigned from Place Number Five pursuant to Article 11, Section 11 of the Texas Constitution. A vacancy for a city with three-year terms must be filled with a special election, and such election must be held within 120 days after such vacancy occurs. Therefore, the special election can be held in conjunction with the May 9, 2015 City Council election. All of the aspects of the special election will be the same as the general election except for the filing period. The filing period will be February 6 through March 9, 2015. Councilman Durham will continue to serve in the Place Number Five until the election results are canvassed and his successor is sworn into office pursuant to Article 16, Section 17 of the Texas Constitution. Recognition of staff as the council approved the proposed resolution and election calendar as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as written, a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to reports. Nika?
No, please.
Mayor and council, as you know, we've had several changes in the planning and economic development department in the past month. We had a few vacancies that we needed to fill. Pasha Boomsma, our former planning manager, left about a month ago now, a few weeks ago. And so we have filled that position with Richard Lutke. I wanted to introduce him tonight. He's, comes to us from Argyle. He is the director of, director of community development in Argyle. So he has vast knowledge and experience in planning over 20 years. He's an Aggie, but we're not going to hold that against him. And before that, he was the planning manager in Keller for over 10 years. So we are happy to have Richard with us. Actually, his first day is going to be February 18, but he's eager to be at our council meeting. So I'm glad he's here tonight. So I thought that I would bring him up and introduce him, Richard Lutke.
Richard, certainly good to have you with us, sir. Appreciate you joining our team.
Thank you, looking very forward to working with city staff, the mayor and council, and the boards and commissions.
And we'll try to see if we can find somebody that'll whoop for you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Chief?
No, sir.
Lynda, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Oh, I just knew you'd come up with something tonight.
I can't think of anything.
Okay. Oh, here we go, I knew she'd have something.
I will say that we had a great team participate in the Big D stair climb on Saturday in honor of Chief Tittle. It was lots of fun. We walked lots of steps, and we were very well represented by our SWAT team and a fire team, and then just a number of employees from all the different departments across the city. And also, don't forget Councilman Gilmore.
Thank you. What about our city manager? I didn't hear you mention her name.
She smoked all of us and did a great job.
All right, good.
She was smoking?
Going up the stairs?
I was not smoking going up the stairs.
Chief Kerbo?
Mayor, I'm sore.
Carol?
Well, we actually did get some rain in the, I knew you'd be anxious to hear the lake ticked up a couple of inches, but we didn't get a lot, we got more rain up north than we did here, so, you know, every little bit helps if we're coming along with that, but I'd be happy to hear that. And also, we're actually, our drainage crew is on Edmonds at Timber Creek this week. So if you see those guys out and about, that's what they're doing, so.
Great.
We might have enough water in the lake for that jet ski tournament, right?
I'd be love, I'd love to have one out there, just as long as there's plenty of water.
All right.
Gina? Brenda? I'm going to skip you.
Have a few things to share.
Oh, he's ready to say something. But I can tell you were chomping at the bits, ready to go.
Yeah, I just couldn't wait. You're going to hear a lot over the next few years about NEST, and that's our Neighborhood Enhancement Strategy Team. And it's compiled of staff members that are working together and coming up with ideas and ways to implement the 2025 plan, cover all the big moves. Part of that is that we're identifying all the neighborhoods in the city, those that have representation and those that don't, and we're soliciting for what we call neighborhood leaders. And our Neighborhood Leaders Program is going to be kicking off in April. And having said that, if you know anybody in a community that you think would be a good leader, we've gotten hold of most of the people that participated in the 2025 plan. And if there's anybody watching this or listening to this and that would like to, please contact Neighborhood Services, because we'd love to have as many people as we can get.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, Cleve. Who, who from the city staff will be attending those?
Either myself or Yolanda Wilson would be in contact.
Great, thank you, appreciate that, sir. We hope the citizens will join in and do that, because it does seem to make a big difference when the neighborhoods tend to join together and help, just like, it's similar to what you've experienced, Chief Kerbo, in the crime watch areas, when they join together, it seems to help quite a bit. So hopefully they'll work here, too. Mr. Bacchus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Just wanted to give some recognition to our police department. Our overall crime rate was reported this past week, and it is down overall. And I know Chief Kerbo will be the first to say that it's because of the close work of our citizens with our police department that allows that to happen. So thank you, guys, for all your hard work and for being out there, and thank you, citizens, for working with our police to create a safer Lewisville.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Barron?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a few items for MCL Grand coming up. Live performances, we have dazzling talent presented February 20. That's Lewisville Lake Symphony's annual young artist competition winner, and that'll be at 7:30 in the evening, February 20. So looking forward to that. Silence is presented by the North Texas, North Central Texas College on February 20 and 21. The Texas Tune Series continues every third Saturday, this time with the Waymoors, and they're pretty famous, have some Grammy credits to their name, and so I haven't heard them before, but I'm looking forward to seeing that, and I think it'll be a good concert. And if it's anything like the last one, it'll be a big turnout. Public events, we have Visual Arts League continues those Friday night jam, so bring your guitar, bring your lute, bring your banjo, maybe not the banjo. No, I'm just kidding. Just bring yourself and come listen or participate. Art exhibits, we have the Nature of Texas exhibit presented by Visual Arts League. That opens on February 7 and runs through March 21. And steampunk presented by Visual Arts League through March 21. And if you're not familiar with that term, steampunk, you can go Google that, but it's an interesting art form that's kind of emerged in the last, I'd say, four or five years, and a lot of people find it pretty entertaining to look at. So that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn?
Nothing, sir.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, we appreciate you being here tonight, appreciate what you do each day. Thank you, sir. In that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to the construction of the Old Town Park Plaza, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we will now convene into closed session. I thought you had it right there. I thought you had it right there.
Neil skipped closed session?
It's because I saw no need.
Hey, Neil, you made me laugh out loud with the lute. Bring your lute.
We'll convene back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken, council?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion adjourned by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.